It is five thirty. I'll call the meeting to order. Your light is on. Lynn, you're up first, the 2024 budget kickoff.
All right, Lynn's here. Um, it's hard to believe that we are already talking about the budget. And thank you for having me back for my second budget, so.
You're welcome.
You know what, it's a little touch and go there.
I know. Yeah, but I am excited about it, so. Um, we'll just go over the schedule, just kind of at a high level. Um, these dates are subject to change with what we have going on and when information comes into us, so. We're at June fifth, we're kicking it off, and then we'll could, I'm sure we'll be in July before we know it. And I sent out the department head budgets today, so they'll start working on those immediately, I'm sure. And then they will have them back to me by July seventeen, and hopefully I'll get a draft budget. Um, the county doesn't give us our information as far as tax capacity and stuff until the last minute, usually around August fourteen. Um, sometimes we can squeeze it out of them a little bit early. Um, so that's why those dates in August are a little, um, tense. You know, we can present a budget, but it might not be accurate, um, with any kind of levy information, um, until after we get that information from the county. So we have a couple work session dates there to discuss budget items with you guys. And then in September, there's an important date there, so hopefully by then we have a really good grasp on what you guys are expecting and what the city is looking at for a levy increase by then, because on September eighteenth, we are scheduled to adopt the preliminary levy, because by the end of that month, it is due to the county for the preliminary levy, and that is where we set it at the highest that it can be. Um, and then we can only go down from there. And in October, we are planning on presenting the long-term financial plan. And then we'll talk about our water sewer storm, um, kind of rates, as well as projected revenues for the next ten years, capital assets, and it'll just kind of lump all of everything that we've been talking about together. November, we'll continue to work and analyze the fiscal conditions, um, and then I'll present you with the TNT draft. And another important date in December would be December eighteenth meeting, where we are scheduled to adopt the, um, budget. It certified the 2024 tax levy, because again, at the end of December, we have to present that and submit it for final certification to Carver County. Any questions on the budget schedule? No?
Lynn, would you mind just on the long-term financial plan, talking about how we're splitting up some of those topics for the council?
Sure, absolutely. So, um, so the long-term financial plan, as you know, we are, we're doing a ten-year lookout. And beca- as we, as we work on that, we're, it's becoming a little bit more, um, information than we, than we planned on it. Yeah, I'm, it's, it's just overwhelming going from five years to ten years, and so instead of presenting that all to you in one bite, um, we're going to break it up, and we're going to have Erin present parks and trails. We're gonna have Chad present, um, you know, public service equipment, and then he'll help Erin and Dana present infrastructure and, um, waters, you know, also water sewer stuff and road maintenance, um, pavement management. Um, and then Brent will do staffing plan for the next ten years. Because if we tried to do that all in one, and then you've looked at the numbers, I'd have a lot of people falling off their chairs. So, um, I think just breaking it up into those pieces is gonna help us digest it a lot easier, and then allow for more time to ask questions as well. So, that's kind of what we're doing, different work sessions, um, little pieces at a time. So.
Sounds good.
So, some guiding principles, um, just, I think I did the same thing with my.
I'm sorry, if we're gonna do little pieces at a time, and then are we gonna have kind of the recap one after?
Yeah.
Cause I mean, we need this, but we need that entire.
Yep. Yeah, so we're planning on doing all of these prior to the final presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, so then we'll have time to kind of make tweaks to it.
That's what we were about.
The hope is if you see any pieces that are like, I don't like this, and we can, or I need more justification when we get to the end, we can either have that, or you can say like, we're not gonna even include this in the ten-year plan, because we know the council won't support it.
Yep.
You'll have enough information that when you see the financial impact, you'll, you can have some nuggets you might want to go back to and say, you know, that one vehicle purchase in twenty twenty-seven, or that staff added twenty-five, I want to dig down, because I'm not comfortable with how we ended up for tax impact in that specific year, rather than getting that all the, the content and the financial impact at once.
Sounds good.
So just a few things to be thinking about while I'm presenting, and this is just a very high-level presentation, kind of a recap too, so. Um, what kind of opportunities are there after listening to this presentation, and what kind of challenges do you see the city coming faced with? And then what, what do you think is going to be a priority for 2024? Um, or what, if, if I mention anything when we're going through this, do you say, no, let's just wait on that, let's push it to a different year? And then if there's any specific programs or services that you want studied as per the 2024 budget? And then just any other observations, questions, concerns that you want to show the staff and council? So, some of the 2024 financial objection, objectives. Just kind of some themes that have been ringing out are low taxes, increased tax capacity, um, and open and honest bud- budgeting process for residents, which is that fiscal transparency. And then the long-range planning that I was talking about just shows that, you know, the city of Carver is really having some, we're trying to show fiscal responsibility, and we're planning for those growth in tax rates. Um, and we're planning for, hopefully, low increase in rates in the future for utilities, and that's important. And then, um, lastly, I put it in the middle because of our strategic priorities. Um, we want to make sure that we're making decisions around all of our strategic priorities, which is our enhanced financial strength, how are we doing that, improved operations, responsive development, stable infrastructure system, and those communications. So all, everything we do in our budget, all of the decisions that we make on a day-to-day should support these strategic priorities. So, budget pressures. Now, I wish I could say like, oh, this is gonna be such a fun budget to work on, but I don't think it's going to be this year. Um, we have some pressures, and one of them is just inflation. We saw that last year. As the, um, audit gets presented in the next session, you'll see that we didn't have any of the extra money to transfer over to the um, special capital fund, and that a lot of it's because of just the economic conditions. And so I see that ringing true again in 2024. The Consumer Price Index was at four point nine percent from, in April of 2022, and last year at this time it was eight point three. And so it's just, you know, it just keeps increasing. That's energy, gasoline, it's all of those things that we use to do our construction, you know, with what we're buying to, to increase our, and improve our infrastructure, is all of those things. And we're not talking, you know, we don't do the small, little projects in Carver, we tend to do the bigger projects, so. Um, that, that's a pressure. Interest rates. So as far as new home construction goes, right now the thirty-year fixed mortgage rate, I had to look this up, um, cause I'm not really buying a new house, but it's seven point one-two percent. I couldn't even believe that. Um, so that's an increase of one point eight percent from la- this time last year, which I thought was even high. So that makes, you know, the, the market really hard to predict, you know, are we gonna build a hundred new home starts, are we gonna have a hundred and sixty, um, are we gonna hit those numbers? So, I think interest rates really does affect those, those predictions. And then staffing and personnel costs. Health insurance and workers' compensation costs are both rising. Again, um, you know, we're meeting with our benefits provider next week, starting to talk about health insurance trends and what are those looking like. And again, we're, we're in that area where we're so close to the, you know, Minneapolis metro area that wages have to remain competitive among everybody to just stay competitive, and, and we're talking about retention of staff. So that's also a, a budget pressure. Um, and then lastly, I put a budget pressure of growth. And mind you, these are, these are my opinions of our budget pressures, so I'm sure that you all might want to share some others. And please do at the end. When I talk about growth, it's additional resources needed to operate the city, and that could be anything from milliner-related resources, it could be human resources, um, more manpower, more building inspections, more people flushing hydrants, more people needed to plow the streets. So, um, more residents just equals more growth, and it equals more resources needed, such as money, so. Those are kind of the pressures we're looking at for 2024. But here is some good news. We use, obviously, the assessment data from 2023, and so the new construction um, value added was fifty-nine million, um, but residential was fifty-six million. And so the total change percentage was eleven percent. If you remember last year, we had a much higher change percent, it was like thirty. Um, but that was ridiculous. That, that, that it was just, I mean, that, those are the numbers that Carver County hasn't seen. I don't know if they've seen that ever, but, um, I think eleven percent is manageable. Um, the new construction percentage changes of six and a half percent. Yeah, we get this data, we get this actual chart straight from Carver County, so. If anybody has any questions after, we're, I'm happy to help. So then I just threw up the numbers side by side, so you could see, um, the comparison from 2022. Oh, thirty-one, yeah, it was thirty-one.
That's the bottom from twenty-one to twenty-two, right?
Yes, yep, yep. So you can see where we're at for the percent change, as well as the total change in, um, new construction, market change, and then total percent change. And then I just threw it on a graph, so you can see the big jump from last year, and we're still, you know, adding that value to the city.
Lynn, can you go back one slide?
Absolutely.
I think the, just for, um, highlighted in there, yeah. I think the hardest part about last year was managing the market change outside of new growth, and so on identifying that, explaining that to residents, because when they saw their, you know, they're, had a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home, and their value went from three-hundred to three-sixty, um, explaining the context of that is always a challenge, or can be a challenge. Where at five percent, it's still an issue to be explained, but the range or spectrum of values is so much more condensed that, um, I think it'll make it easier, um, relatively for the city and the council to make decisions, and not, um, be as concerned about how it impacts the overall market change in the community, so I just wanted to highlight that.
That's a good point. So this is kind of a piggyback off of that. The Carver County Assessor's Office is indicating a median residential property value increase of four point one percent, which seems to be kind of a more manageable, uh, percentage to e- to explain, that's kind of what Brent was talking about. Um, so, this year, the average value property is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, and I'll highlight that in a different slide. Um, last year was four hundred and ten thousand, if that gives you an idea. Um, and then I, just to call out, I'll probably say this during a couple of different times this year, but, the Minnesota statute calls for property to be assessed at market value, which is often a misconception. That values for tax purposes are set at seventy-five to eighty percent of market value. Um, and then any concerns, because we don't, we just contracted with the Carver County Assessor's Office, um, they should be addressed with the Assessor's Office, and I have the phone number there as well as their email address. So then, these numbers are using the 2023 final city tax rates. I updated all of those, as well as with their new population. And then I plugged it in on last, last year's, um, average valued home to see where Carver fell into compared to, um, the other Carver County cities. We just like to do this to kind of compare where are we sitting as far as city tax, um, go, so I'd say we're in the bottom third. And then just a preview of our debt service fund, that's one thing I can figure out for next year, you know, we have a pretty solid debt service schedule. Um, it looks like the 2015 refunding bond will be falling off, and that's bringing up about a hundred and twelve thousand. And then, you know, that, the 2010 bond fell off this year. But obviously too early to tell any other numbers, but that's a decrease of eight point five percent in the debt levy, so.
Can you, sorry.
Yep.
Go back one slide. So one of the things, just a little commercial for our strategic plan, one of the initiatives was to manage the city's tax rate from fluctuation, I think we had three percent or, uh, what's the rate? And so understanding that, at least for now, the council's likely considering a, a debt server, new debt in 2024, um, for the public services and fire addition, and possibly some other projects. You know, it'll be, I think, incumbent upon staff, and then with council's direction, trying to, to manage, because it won't, in 2025, it won't be that dip, and so how far are you gonna manage that dip to go down, or are there other strategic priorities that you want to manage? Uh, so that you don't get this roller coaster effect with not only your general operating levy, but your debt service levy. Um, and I think that's a opportunity that the city hasn't always seized, where we've let it drop by twenty percent, only to increase by twenty percent, which then ends up being a forty percent, you know, year-over-year, uh, change, and so understanding that, talking about it, getting feedback from the council will be a critical part of this year's budget process.
So, right now, the only known factor is the debt service levy, from what we know. Um, what is changing in 2024? So we talked a little bit about the average valued home, so it's, uh, increasing by seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars, a four percent increase. And we saw the new construction value, uh, the estimated population for 2024 is seventy-two hundred people, and that's about a seventeen percent increase. And right now, we're estimating, um, number of new home starts at one sixty. That number could change, but that's what we're estimating it at right now.
That number seems high. Is that keeping with our traditionally conservative estimate?
Um, I think this number is different than what we originally had planned. This, this number is from.
You're talking new homes?
Yeah.
And so you can account for, I mean, that has the CDA project in it, so it's likely even.
Okay, okay, okay. So it isn't, it is different than a conservative number?
Okay.
That, okay. So I think we were originally at like a hundred or a hundred and twenty.
Okay, that reflects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just to remind, like, that even the seventy-two forty-six number, the population number that we just got for August for twenty twenty-three is actually a number based on uh, April first of 2022, so it's always a little bit behind. So it's a hard number to kind of track and follow, but, you know, because frankly, right now, we're probably in the high sixes or closer to seven, uh, based on what our building permits tell us.
So, 2024 budget priorities. Um, we are going to be meeting and discussing a new collective bargaining agreement, that is, Vicky, in, in other words. Um, that's our staff, who is part of that ASME, um, union, so that will be soon, and that will go on 2024 budget. Southwest prime decisions. So currently, we are budgeted this year in twenty-three at twenty thousand dollars, and we, through April, have expended ten thousand, um, five hundred and eighty-four dollars to April. So that'll be a kind of a discussion we want to make sure we have a good grasp on in 2024.
So, basically, the first quarter, we went through half. So we're in the first third.
The numbers, right?
First third. Yeah.
Thirty-three percent. Thirty-three point three.
And then, um, number three, compensation and classification study. We, we talked about this last year, this is something that we want to do, and it ties into employee, our employee survey, as well as our, um, strategic priorities. Um, just getting a professional service in here to help us with the compensation and classification study. And I don't think they've had, we've had one done here at Carver, over ten years maybe, I'm not sure. So that's an important thing that we'd like to plan for. And then implementation of the strategic, strategic plan priorities. However, each department wants to start working on that, and even crossing over if I can help Erin, and she can help me. Um, and then proactive planning for maintenance and repairs. Um, this could be anything from, you know, Chad, Chad mentioned he's making a inventory of all of his trucks and his fleet, and then starting to go out ten, fifteen years on when are we going to be replacing these? Um, and then same with Erin, she went through every single park in the city, and started talking about what kind of repairs are gonna be needed, when are these gonna be needed, um, and, yeah, it's eye-opening, so.
It's, we're hoping to follow the model of the pavement management plan, so we don't, we don't want it, we're not gonna propose to take it all in one gulp, but basically, you think of, you know, parks and trails, you think of the equipment, you think of building, maintenance, and facilities. You, we're gonna work on identifying those needs, and then building a a ladder and financing plan that helps you get there. So if you remember, like, or going back to the first year of the pavement management plan, it was, you know, just under a hundred thousand dollars. And so like, now we're gonna try to add three or four more categories to that. And so, by seizing some opportunity, dedicating plan numbers, and then laddering it up every year, in five years, we'll have, you know, I think our pavement management plan is, I would say that, you know, the model for, for the area, for like how to fund new street maintenance. Um, we just need to build capacity in these other areas to match that.
How does that tie in? Um, we're looking at some of our existing parks, because we had talked briefly about adding new amenities to places that we already have, because obviously we can't use parked out on all of those, so. What, uh, how does that correlate with maintenance repairs, or is that something we're gonna keep really separate for this proactive planning?
It's, it's a little bit of both, like, as it relates to parks, so there'll be some maintenance and repairs, you know, some lower-level maintenance repairs are just in your operating budget, but if it's, you know, a large piece, like the replacement of a community park playground that, in next year, you know, that's a replacement, but they're within the confines of that plan, you'll also see new items with yet to be named and developed, but, um, they'll be confined into that same, I would say, like, overall capital plan for that, so you'll see maintenance and new in the same bucket.
So some preliminary, I should say, 2024 budget considerations, I apologize. One idea, commit the, and Brent touched on this a little bit, he, commit the debt relief for you set a later date. There's an idea that we had, um, year three of the pavement management plan is this year with an increased levy from, um, oh my gosh, I did not even change that, I should say three-twenty to four-twenty. Golden! Um, but I would like to maybe, and Brent kind of touched on this too, just now, discuss an increase to incorporate parking lots and trails. So those are those two other items that he talked about, those are, you know, it's really fast for trails to just disintegrate, if you're not taking care of them, and same in parking lots, you see like just big chunks missing out of them, and so we'd like to incorporate those into our milliner-related pavement management plan. Um, there are two full-time positions planned, it's a public services superintendent, um, with a utilities focus, as well as a public service, those are the two full-time positions, uh, planned for 2024. And then I touched on the compensation classification study, and that is about twenty-five to thirty thousand, I believe we got on that. I also touched on the prime budget commitment level, and I gave you the facts on the twenty thousand budget, and we're at about ten thousand. And then just funding capital improvements from the applicable funds at the needed levels, and what I mean by that is, you know, if water is, you know, going to be using a piece of equipment the most, then I want water fund paying for it, and then, you know, sewer can do a transfer of what they, what percentage they think that they're gonna use. I, I don't, I want to make this the least complicated as possible, but I want to make sure each fund is contributing their share, so.
So is that a switch from a traditional split, it's for equipment X, Y, and Z, it's all different?
We're still, we're still gonna do the traditional split, but, um, how we did it before is we'd have like, say we're gonna add a truck in the public services department, we would have the truck set up like three, you can see on our capital improvement plan, truck, truck, truck. So, right now, we're just gonna say, public services truck, that's where it's gonna be housed, and then the water, you would see like a transfer.
Right.
And so we'll be seeing a lot more like transfer, um, type transactions, and I'll try to explain those a little bit better when we're setting up our budgets, um, you know, transfer to general fund for capital equipment, or something like that, so. Um, and just, you know, trying to ladder out that cap, those capital improvements, so that we can pay cash in the years that we can pay cash. Um, and then if we're gonna bond, fine, we can bond, but we're really trying to utilize the cash in the future years when we have it available, so. So guiding principles, again, we're back at this slide. I just, this is for you guys, this is your time now, and Brent and I are here, Chad's here, Erin's here, Vicky's here, so we're all here to answer questions if you have any, otherwise just discuss amongst yourselves. You don't have to go through each of these, you can just discuss, or let me know what you need.
Brent, I think the way we've traditionally gone through this is just to beam off one by one, so let's start with number one. What are your takeaways, objectives, challenges, goals, et cetera, after listening to the 2024 budget presentation? Here, do you want to start? Well, does anybody have anything for this one? I don't know.
Yeah, this is my first run-through, so, uh, I'm really taking it in. Uh, what I like, though, is the shift to ten-year planning. Uh, I think that's a really important piece of this, looking forward, so, uh, I'm happy about that. The, well, are we gonna get to some of the specifics in here and questions, or how do you want to tackle that? Cause I do have some questions that came up along.
Why don't you just go ahead? I'm looking at my notes, and it's kind of a hodgepodge, so maybe going one through four of my notes this time round, so.
So, um, one of the objectives is fiscal transparency. I just wanted to ask about that, did it, were we perceived as not being transparent in the past? What led to that being one of the primary outcomes of this new process, of the 2024 process?
I think it's just important to me, as a, a finance director, and just making sure that, um, what we talk about, what I use to come up with, um, you know, the budget and everything to support the budget is available to residents. Um, I've done a lot of different research on different cities, and, you know, you know, looking at their budgets of different things. And I don't feel like a lot of, um, information is available, readily available, and so just making sure that, like, our residents have access to everything that you see.
And that wasn't to say that it isn't important, it is to say, is there a reason that it's front and center because uh, it wasn't perceived that way in the past, or there's a big change we're gonna make in how this is presented? Or we're following a best practice from another city?
Are you saying, are you asking why are we calling it out if it wasn't, if we're not solving a problem that we didn't have?
Right, because I agree, I mean, I think that's just matter of fact, it's important for, uh, to make it available, but are we, are we addressing some specific shortcomings from a past budget?
I would say it, to Lynn's point, it's a, it's more of a value proposition, that you believe in it, and uh, I would say every year, we try to at least think of one new idea to, not just provide it, but to provide it in a way that is consumable, so like, uh, the example, a few years ago, we started off making a slide related to your, um, taxes paid in the form of a monthly utility bill, like, so you pay twelve dollars a month for snow plowing, and eight dollars a month for fire service, in a way that is maybe a little bit more tangible, and so, another thing we added, and up, you know, probably a decade or so ago, but was a a spectrum of looking at homes at different values, as opposed to just the average value, and so, I just think, at least for staff, we can take for granted that, like, everyone knows what the, what tax rate means versus like mark, estimated market value, and just regular market value, and so like creating almost a cheat sheet or cliff notes for residents, so that they can not just participate, but participate with meaning, in a meaningful way. Um, and I think that's more of a journey than a actual destination, so Lynn's just kind of, I think, highlighting that, or we're highlighting that. Cause part of that was just identified, I think, in the strategic plan as well, of like, you know, when you can fill in the blanks before the questions are asked, I think it creates a different type of relationship with residents and businesses.
Also, I think it's something that we're doing really well, I forgot what it was that we were talking about last year that we're both trying to look up, it might have been preliminary levy. We were talking about how hard it was to find it on other cities' websites. And part of it is our familiar area, we, with our own systems, but it would be really hard to find it for neighboring communities, so.
I did really like the monthly cost breakdown, you know, well, I mean, making it relatable, for sure. Um, okay, a couple other questions, and some of these I'll just skip to later, but, uh, the prime commitment level, when does the grant run? But the prime commitment level, when does the grant run out?
So two separate things. The grant that we have is for the bus service that takes you downtown into the U of M. So right now, I think we are shooting, we're thinking four or five more years. But that's separate from the prime dial service where you call and request, right?
Reason I ask is the last meeting I went to with Southwest Transit, I asked their attorneys some questions about the relationship with Carver, and if we were ever to move into the same kind of relationship as Chaska or Chan Hasen, what that looks like. And I, I wasn't sure about the grant date. I know that's not specific to prime, but if, if that relationship changes, it'll change how prime works with us.
I would just, an addendum to that is, even just with the way that the grant operates, I don't think there, at least in my opinion, no one thought that that grant was going to extend out as long as it has. And I would say that was somewhat championed by past leadership of Southwest Transit, namely, Len Simich, Dave Jacobson, Matt Feith, and all three of those individuals know, know long with Southwest Transit. So at some point, there'll be an opportunity for the city of Southwest to connect on where that grant goes. Because that, informally, there's been some pressure or conversations that like, how long are we going to let Carver, you know, continue to use that grant and extend and extend as opposed to, that's, I think some of the dialogue the council had, we used to have a lot more routes. Those routes weren't used, and so they spread it out and limited the routes. But you could make an argument, it's like, well, let's provide like, the full slate of routes, and we're going to use up those grant funds, and either it's going to like, work like we think it might or should, or won't. But also, like, a lot of these conversations happened pre-COVID, and mass transit, the whole industry has changed in the last three years. And so a lot of conversations to be had around that topic in general.
All right. Well, I'm starting with my discussions with Southwest Transit. I'll keep the others for a little while, see if we get to them.
Okay. Who wants to guess Eric's remaining question?
So I, on a budget priority, so we have a new collective bargaining agreement. Is there anything that we should be on the lookout for, or is this just our typical?
Typical.
Yep. It's my first one, so I don't know.
Yeah. And then, you know, we were talking about the percentage of, of the ebbs and flows of our budget, and we landed on that three percent mark that we don't want to go below or above. Help me understand again why that was kind of the magic number?
I wouldn't say it's some of the magic numbers, the council, like, the, I think the, the origin of it is that you, you know, let's just use five percent, that you don't drop five percent and then increase by ten percent the next year, that you have this consistent tax rate that you get away from managing budgets from year to year, and you forecast out and say, well, we're going to have these needs, and so we're going to manage what we need for taxes over this five years in a more sensitive and meaningful way than like, well, this year we need less, and so we're going to, we're going to budget down to the bone. But this year, we're going to, the next year, when we know we have this big increase, we're going to subject people to this twenty-five percent tax rate increase. I don't think there's a right or wrong way to look at it. It's just the feedback we got from the councils, we want that measured. Not that we're taking too much or too little, but when there is opportunities to increase, let's put some pressure on ourselves to make sure that we're staying at, you know, in that range. And there's always going to be exceptions to that. The same goes for BOA. It's like, well, we could drop this thing down to, you know, ten percent increase. But if you know that the following year, you have a five, you know, ten percent increase, well, maybe you want to budget for some one-time capital projects and relieve some burden for the following year. Like, for example, based on kind of what we're seeing for design costs, we might have up to a hundred thousand dollars in match for, to get the Third Street Bridge done. Well, for example, you could say, well, if we're going to have a hundred thousand dollar decrease to debt service in 2024, should we just take that hundred thousand dollar savings and apply it to the Third Street Bridge so we don't have to increase the levy for the next year? So it's, that's an example of a situation, doesn't mean it's a situation, but that's kind of the backdrop to at least the strategic initiative that we felt like we heard from the council.
I'll also add that, you know, again, I like to research. I like to, you know, dig in and look around. If you look at Chan and Chaska, you know, the kind of established cities that are doing a ton, ton, ton of build, you know, growth like we are doing, and you look at what's their growth, their tax rate been over the last fifteen, twenty years? And it, there hasn't been the ups and the downs and the ups and the downs, you know? We're looking at two percent one way or the other. And, you know, last year, a lot of cities could have given their residents a lot of tax relief, probably because of the growth in the market. But keeping that tax rate right in there allows them to do what Brent just said, and either plan for capital projects, put that money away, you know, invest for future growth, future projects, or in case this year, they're not getting as much tax capacity, and then, you know, they don't have to drop, you know, or increase their tax rate the other way. So it helps them stable it out a little bit.
For many years, the city of Chan Hasen had a limit similar to their three percent, but their limit was, their tax levy wouldn't increase no more than their percentage of growth increase. So if they had, you know, I think our growth rate was like at six percent, well, then they would say their levy can't increase by any more than six percent. And so there are pros to cons to that, I'm sure if you talk to the Chan folks. And at some point, and Lynn and I haven't discussed this, but like, you know, at some point, I think the city, you know, a year or two, like, it would be helpful to have like, a skeleton budget for like, 2025, so that like, it's not like you're adopting two budgets, but there is some benefit, like the state, you know, budgets in two-year cycles, so you can kind of, it reinforces this idea that the city doesn't stop operations after a year. It's like, it continues that flow of like, you're trying to manage things in advance. And so it would give you a better window into what you're looking at for the following year. I mean, you can take that to the extreme, but I think the, the combination of doing ten years and then as the next step, doing two-year budgets feels like the right next step once we get our ten-year plan in place.
Yeah, I agree. The, the ten-year look helps us see farther out into the future to try to balance and keep that levy within a small tighter range. I also like some of the, the things that are being proposed here about adding trails and parking lots to our pavement management plan, right? That's again, another way that we can kind of watch and monitor and try to keep spending the same and doing, using that same kind of model for other investments, right? Because I mean, if, if, for example, right, we know new homes, right? And we can't, you know, we have less, or we don't have a massively increasing tax base, and we look at our expenditures, you know, we can cut a little bit on pavement management plan, or this and that, I mean, we have options, right, that are available to us. It's just, I like the way the city is planning ahead and giving us options so that we can try to keep things at an even keel.
It is on the, the classification and compensation study, it's a little bit of a teaser.
I have a question on that one, so if you're going.
Starting the conversation.
Oh, okay, no, I'm taking, does that relate to the question I just asked, or something different?
No, something different. It's just that, so we haven't done one in ten years, and so Leah Davis from ABDO is going to be coming out to our July seventeenth meeting to give a really nice overview of what that process looks like. She got permission too, for the city of Hastings, to share their classification and compensation study. So I have that sitting that I'll be sending out, so, because it's a big amorphous thing of like, twenty-five to thirty thousand, well, what is this compensation and classification study? So my hope is to send that out to you so you can see the study, then hear her presentation on the seventeenth, and then have a discussion about like, how does this relate to Carver? And so you can, okay, it's in the same vein as the budget, it's like, it'll give you the tools to have, ask some meaningful questions about how it impacts your.
Okay, so my next question was about the compensation and classification study. So if we're planning to actually do the study in 2024, I would guess the same as the last time we did it, there will be some changes, right? But we don't want to wait till, say, well, we owe you this money, but we're not paying you until the next budget cycle, 2025. So where, where is that going to come from? So let's just say, somebody who's making sixty thousand, the study comes back, they should be making seventy thousand a year. Where's that money going to come?
We would do it in 2025. I don't think we're, there, there isn't a situation where you, I mean, you, you have to do anything. You could, the compensation study could say, you know, you're paying too much, paying, I mean, it's all kind of editorial, the data is overview, apply it to your own values and logic, but it's not a, like, a pay equity situation where someone's going to, like, we're underpaying a certain position, at least, not that we're aware of, because we've been in compliance with our pay equity standards. This is, this is, I think, a hundred percent council, like, how do you want to be viewed in the market compared to your peer city cohort? We're going to have them, or what we'd like to be able to do with the council's support is start the first step of the process in 2023, where, you know, part of it is doing the position analysis and classification system. So having Vicki work with the team and ABDO on going through those steps so that a lot of the financial part and the market studies can be done early in 24. But our hope is that we have all that done and the council's decisions in place so that it perfectly informs the 2025 budget cycle. But I don't view this, at least from my position, where like, we're going to owe anybody or anything as far as like, a pay increase mid-year.
Okay, well, that's because I had this confused with the pay equity study that we did in the past times. So that explains all of that.
No worries. Yep.
Good clarification.
Do you want to ask what Eric's question is?
Want to get any of them?
So I, I do like adding the trails and parking lots to the pavement management plan that makes total sense. Yes, trails, right? We've got a lot of them, we want to maintain them, same as roads. And then, yeah, I mean, I do obviously want to find a way to fund Southwest Transit and figure out how to not be a third of the budget after the year, right? Whatever it is. And figure out how to better plan for that within our budget. So the other piece that I was just thinking about as we went through here, I mean, I know we're going to talk about the strategic plan, but as we put together this budget, it would be really nice to just make sure we highlight those things that are related to the strategic plan, just call them out specifically, because we put this effort into the strategic plan, let's demonstrate how we, it comes through in our budget.
Was that any here?
So far, Christie, you got two of them.
Oh!
Yes, I have questions about staffing and remaining competitive and the pavement management plan and using the debt relief. So, all right, there's a couple more, we'll see.
That's it, I got.
I'm super excited and a little nervous. Okay, so my, let's see, question is, for preliminary 2023 budget considerations, I didn't hear anything about the public services and fire department building projects or the equipment certificate. And just, I know Brent kind of mentioned that, I know that that hasn't fallen off our radar, but I just want to confirm.
Yep, I think it's just still in motion. I think it's definitely a plan. We are currently working with WOLD on the architectural side of things, and so I think we've had two meetings, Chad, on the building, and so, yeah, I think it's still.
The debt service won't hit until 25, so you won't see it in the budget numbers for 24.
Okay, that makes sense. On both that and the equipment certificate? Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And then, just random thoughts, I just really like the idea, the commitment to the debt service relief, and it's exactly what you've said, so I won't go into too much detail, but keeping from those ebbs and flows, having the certain funds dedicated for ongoing maintenance and development of our existing resources. I don't think that buildings or trails are disposable, so I want to see us putting what we need to be in that to make sure that we're making sure that they'll be up for a long time. Did we get any today? All right, what are your other questions?
Well, that's actually nothing I need to go into now. I have one question about mortgage rates, though, since that's a challenge for us. Mortgage rates are backing off. They were high six months ago, and they're, they've dropped a bit. My understanding is we haven't had, seen any impact that housing starts or developers, that really hasn't impacted anything with us, has it?
No, nothing sizable, like our, Natalie just put together our building spreadsheet, last year, year-to-date, single family, we had thirty-two homes, this year we have twenty-six. So we're not terribly far behind last year. So, no, it feels like we're in kind of a weird pocket where, I would say it's touched just a little bit, but probably not as drastically as other places.
I think it's weird, too, again, totally what caused those changes in the market. I remember early in 2020 during the pandemic, and we were still going gangbusters with new housing starts, at a time when it kind of seemed like, is this the time that you want to be moving and buying new houses? So you never know, but will.
Well, rates have tipped over eight percent, so they're down a whole point. I'd say that's good.
All right. Any other questions, comments, thoughts, or any one of these four others?
I love the chart of the new residential construction value of history. It's really helpful to visualize, because these are all data numbers we look at every year, but just relative to the past, it's really helpful.
People are, you know, they're, I would imagine, the biggest worry is when our housing values, anyone living here, went up dramatically, is, oh my gosh, what are my taxes going to be? And for, I think, most of us, they dropped a bit. I know that was called out, I think, in the, in the newsletter, but that is, anybody watching, that's the fear, oh my goodness, what will happen? With that increase in housing value, is there any lag in catching up? So values went up twenty percent last year, this, we saw a little bit of an increase in, in taxation. Any projected change in that rate? Or have we seen the impact of that increase?
Well, I think that's shown in Lynn's slide, you can see that. I mean, the, Dave, I might have to be a little bit off on this, but I believe there's state statute requires that that value has to be within ninety, it's ninety percent. And so the assessor's office goes through a process, I don't know the specifics, but, you know, basically, they test out to make sure that the values of that community are ninety percent of what the home sales are, and there's a process that they do to get neighborhoods. And so that's why you'll see, you know, some neighborhoods will go up more or less, that's, this is, you know, the product of a average, not necessarily an individual home, but the ninety percent is the, the number that statute requires. Is that, that's correct?
That's what I recall, it's been a while since we looked at the assessment, the statutes on that, but I think it's ninety percent, that's, I don't want to speculate too much, but to Brent's point, yeah, that's exactly right. And I think to your point too, Eric, in Carver, one of the reasons, and it probably wasn't the case for everybody, but values went way up, taxes didn't necessarily go way up, that's because Carver is such a developing community. Other cities where values went way up, and there weren't a lot of new homes, there wasn't more tax base, so taxes went up for everybody a lot. So it kind of varies from community to community, so.
Well, I would say we're doing, you know, I think people were holding their breath, waiting to see how that was going to impact your taxes. It didn't, it was negative for most folks. I don't know how we communicate that relationship and the, you know, the projection of four-point-something percent for 2024, but people worried about dramatic fluctuations in their, in their taxes to the city. Just in a, I'm thinking about a communication strategy to, to quell people's fears about wild fluctuations in what they pay. Didn't happen with that twenty percent increase. Here's what we've seen, here's where we think we're going in 24. How do you put that in the newsletter to address what people are really worried about?
You know, I think we lived through last year, and we saw that it didn't mean high valuation, didn't mean that your taxes were going to go up eleven percent or whatever that number was.
I think it's a good story to, because really, that is, with all the things we talked about, at the end of the day, what people are worried about is, my goodness. what people are worried about is, my goodness, how is this gonna affect what I pay? And that's a, it didn't.
Yeah, but what makes it hard, too, is the timeline, right? Because evaluations come out this time of year-ish, right? And then we don't know the taxes, or we don't have information shared until closer to September. So we can say like, oh, don't worry, but, like, you don't want to.
And, and the city's only one piece of the equation. I mean, there's a county tax levy, there's a school district tax levy, there's all kinds of, I mean.
Mosquito control.
Yeah, that'll be the one that makes it sound right.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of support for increasing their budget this year.
All right, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number three, cannabis licensing.
Yes, I think Vicki's got the ability to pull up my slides. All right, so. Thank you, yes. So as everybody knows, I'm sure you heard that Governor Walz last week signed the cannabis legislation into law. That was on Tuesday, the thirtieth. And so I sent a couple of memos out to Brent, and I know they're both in your work session packet tonight. There's a lot of information to digest, and tonight, we're gonna try to focus on just a couple of things. First of all, I will give a brief overview of what the Office of Cannabis Management is. That's gonna be the new state office that's gonna oversee all the licensing for these cannabis businesses. And then we'll discuss the city's role in that licensing process, and then some very limited local control and regulation that cities will have the option to roll out, depending on what direction you want to go. We'll talk about the council's desire for an interim ordinance on the newly created cannabis businesses. And then we'll also talk about whether there's any desire for an interim, separate interim ordinance on the products that were legalized last year, which we talked about, just in light of the new law and why that might be a good idea. And we can also talk about any questions, and I can try to answer any questions. Although it is, it's almost three hundred and twenty-five pages of, of new law, which is a ton of information. There's a lot of questions around the law still because, just like with any other statute, for example, the liquor regulations, the state also will eventually incorporate rules into the statute, which is gonna guide a lot of folks in terms of what we can and can't do. Those rules are not available yet, and in fact, they won't be available for a handful of months. So we're still many months away from these businesses being able to obtain licenses and actually selling products. But we can talk about, you know, the extent of what we're really trying to do and decide on tonight throughout the evening here. So first of all, the OCM is a newly established state office. It will be established effective on July first. But again, like I just said, there, we're still many, many months away from this office actually issuing licenses. The league and some of the lawmakers are suggesting it's probably not gonna be until really late twenty twenty-four where we actually see licensing rolled out. But that's totally gonna be dependent on how quickly they are up and running, how quickly they create rules and all those critical things that need to happen. There'll be a director, and many state employees hired by this new office. And again, their primary responsibility is gonna be licensing. Cities don't have any authority to license these businesses, that's all state, done at the state level. And again, there's gonna be an expedited rulemaking process that will unfold throughout the rest of this year and probably into next year, which is going to really supplement the new bill and provide a lot of additional information that will be helpful. So when it comes to licensing, cities do have a limited role. They're referred to in the statute as local government units, and includes, of course, cities and townships. Overall, and we'll have to work collectively with staff on this as we end up rolling out licensing. But the main responsibility for cities is that you're gonna get requests for information from the state whenever a cannabis business license is applied for in your community. And then you'll have thirty days to determine whether that business and its location that's proposed complies with all your local rules. That will depend on what your rules are, if and when they are established by the city. One really important, and I would say, I think, the first question cities are asking is, can we prohibit the establishment of these new businesses outright? And the answer is no. LGUs also cannot prohibit possession and transportation use of all these different products that are gonna be available. But there is, and we'll get into it later, a limit, an ability to limit the amount of registrations and licenses issued in your community on a per-population basis. Again, I'll talk about that a little bit more on a later slide. The second bullet point here is also really why we're here tonight, and that's to talk about this new option for implementing an interim ordinance or a moratorium on these new businesses. Cities really don't know what this means yet for their community. And I think a lot of time and thought and energy is going to go into a discussion about where do we want these cannabis businesses located in our city? You know, how close do we want them to schools or daycares? Or what business districts or commercial districts do we want them in? Which do we, which ones do we not want them in? You know, I think Erin and her team and collectively staff and consultants will look at those options, and will, there'll be model ordinances that will eventually be prepared by the state that we'll want to look to, to see what, you know, good ideas might be out there. Again, a lot of this is brand new, not only for Carver, but for every city in the state. And so everybody's kind of in it together, and I think there's gonna be a lot of seeing how things unfold and trying to pivot if we need to, and, and really determine from a planning perspective how these businesses should be treated in each community. So the new law does provide cities to adopt what they call reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner of these businesses. Nobody, I'll be honest, knows what that means because time, place, and manner restrictions are typically, it's a term of art that we use in the First Amendment context, which nobody in here needs to worry or care about. But we don't know why the legislature used that language, and we're trying to figure out what they mean by that. But a lot of what we think it means is there's going to be room for zoning regulations. Again, I keep harping on this, but I think the main thing to focus on is, let's think about where we want these businesses and where we don't want them, and try to work through that. You can't zone these businesses out effectively if you had, you know, you have to be within X amount or further than X amount of feet away from every daycare, school, church, park. You could do that in a way that zones these businesses out altogether. And that's clearly not gonna be something that cities can do. So we want to think a little bit about that as we, as we progress. And like I mentioned before, there is some language in the new law that says, when it comes to these regulations, you can actually say you can't be within a thousand feet of a school or five hundred feet of a daycare, residential treatment facility, parks. The problem is, the statute doesn't define what any of those terms mean. And, for example, what is a daycare? Is it in-home daycares? Is it licensed daycares? Is it any place that might, you know, what is a public park? Is it a city park? Is it a park that might be owned or operated by an HOA that's available generally to people in the neighborhood? I think a lot of that is going to have to play out as well. But this is just an example of one specific allowance or authority that the cities are afforded under the new law. Cities are also going to have the option, and I think most will want to do this, but they'll have the option to register retailers. And that's not licensing. What it really means is that you're registering a retailer that has a state license to operate in your city. And the reason that's going to be important for a lot of cities is because that is where you get the ability to limit the amount of registration in your city on a per-population basis. So I'll get to it in a minute, but ultimately, what cities can do is say there can only be one. You can, you can restrict these businesses to the extent of no more than one per twelve thousand five hundred people. In Carver, of course, we're only at about six or seven thousand people. And so the city will have the ability to limit the amount of cannabis business license. That's different from the low-level THC edibles, which we'll talk about as well tonight. But you can restrict that to effectively one in your entire community. And that's one reason why this registration, I think, is gonna be important for, for many communities. You can charge fees for registration, and you can do preliminary compliance checks just to make sure that the business that is planning to operate in your city will operate in compliance with, you know, applicable state and local requirements. And I don't want to get too into the weeds on what we can do after registration, but there are provisions about suspending registration for violations and imposing civil penalties. Those are things that will all come into play. Hopefully, they never will if the businesses that you do register are doing what they're supposed to do. But if they don't, there are ways for the city to have some oversight and to get involved in some of the enforcement against the business if they, if they do those things that are not allowed. And again, this is what I touched on before. The first bullet point is exactly what I said, how you can have an ordinance as a city that restricts the number to one business per twelve thousand five hundred residents. The second bullet point here is pretty important because it, the, the law specifically says that if the county that your city is in already has the amount of businesses operating that would reach one per twelve thousand five hundred county residents, you as an LGU do not have to register a new business in your community. So for example, I think Carver County has around a hundred and ten thousand people. That means that if, this is kind of a, probably not the greatest hypothetical, but it's just to make sense of this. If Chaska, for example, had nine businesses registered in their community, Carver could say, we're not gonna allow anymore because the county is already at its quota. And we could, as a city, say, we're not even gonna allow one, even though there's that language that I talked about before that says you can't prohibit it outright. You technically can prohibit a new business from establishing if your county has reached the countywide maximum, or at least the countywide maximum that you as a city wish to. It doesn't mean you have to deny it, but you can deny it as a city. So there are a couple of things that staff will have to sort out when it comes to registering these businesses, if and when they might exist in Carver. And that is, there is a statutory requirement for compliance checks, similar to the way we do alcohol and tobacco compliance checks. Those are also something that local law enforcement is very accustomed to doing because they have to do that with, with both of those products. Those checks have to go through age verification requirements, operation requirements, things that are required under the new laws. And they have to be performed by either law enforcement or another employee of the city. I know that Carver doesn't license tobacco. I think that's done by the county. I assume the county does all those compliance checks. Do we know who does your liquor compliance checks? Is that probably the sheriff's office, Brent, or?
Yes.
Okay. And I assume the sheriff's office will be involved in this, too, to the extent we want them to be. They're obviously a good partner in our local law enforcement agency. So we'll have to see how that plays out, but that's just another thing for staff in the council to keep in mind that the city will have to do that if, if there are businesses in the community that we register. And then, you know, I doubt a lot of cities will take advantage of this. Some towns or some very small cities might, but there is an opt-out option for cities. If you don't want to register these businesses, you can ask your county to do it by sending them notice. But if you do opt out, then you can't collect any registration fees, you can't, or you wouldn't be doing compliance checks. Probably wouldn't be the worst thing. But you also cannot impose, like I said before, the limit on the number of businesses that operate in your community. There's a local cannabis aid fund that's created by the new bill. It does impose a ten percent tax upon all the sales of these products. And then that is divided eighty percent to the state. Of course, they're getting the bulk of that money. And then twenty percent to what's called a local cannabis aid account. And that's divided among cities based on the amount of cannabis businesses that operate in your city, in your community. We don't have any idea what those numbers are gonna look like yet, and how much money, you know, cities might be able to, to receive, depending on the amount of businesses you have. That's all gonna depend on sales and.
Dave, is it ten percent above the state sales tax?
It's my understanding, it's a totally separate sales tax that's above and beyond the state sales tax.
Is that local aid? Is that, can be used for anything from a city perspective?
I think so, but the rules could change that. You know, you might have to use it for cannabis enforcement or things that we don't even know might be a thing at this point. So in terms of next steps, again, the reason we're here tonight, and there's, again, there's so much information in this bill, and I tried to summarize a lot of it in the memos that were in your packet tonight. But we want to get feedback from the council on the first interim ordinance, and that's the one that's authorized by this new law. It's really recommended because nobody knows what is going to happen with these businesses and really the right way to, to regulate them. And we also don't know when the state's gonna roll out its licensing. And so as part of this new statute, cities have the ability to adopt an interim ordinance prohibiting the operation of a cannabis business, which are these new businesses created under the law within their city through January first of twenty twenty-five. It doesn't mean you have to have the ordinance in place that entire time. If you come up with regulations that you like and you want to roll out before then, you would repeal the interim ordinance and establish those new regulations simultaneously. But it's really nice because it buys everybody just a period of time to study this and figure out what's the right thing to do. We don't know what other cities are gonna do, what are our neighbors going to do, or other cities throughout the state that might, you know, look like ours from a size and, you know, demographic standpoint. We just, there, there's so much thought, and I think planning, and Erin can probably attest to this, that's going to go into how we might want to treat these businesses. And so I think really, the vast majority of cities are going to be, in the next couple of months, adopting this interim ordinance, just to maintain that status quo, why we can not only study it on our own, but like I mentioned, the law does create a requirement on the state, on the OCM, to work with cities to adopt or establish some model ordinances. And I think it's gonna be really good to see what those look like.
Dave, you mentioned that, there's so weird timing on that because the law doesn't take effect until July one.
Yeah, so, you know, we had talked about how quickly can we bring this to the council. The law that authorizes this interim ordinance doesn't take effect until July first. So we can't, of course, implement or adopt that ordinance tonight. We can't adopt it even at the next meeting in June, but it would be that first meeting in July, or our only meeting in July, which is on the, is it the nineteenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. And that shouldn't be a concern because these businesses aren't gonna be operating that quickly anyway. There's gonna be no chance that they're licensed that soon. So what we're recommending is, you know, the sooner the better, but July or August is, is good to aim for. So our thought was to, if the council is amenable to this interim ordinance, we would bring it to you on the seventeenth of July. And again, I think the, the law really recognizes what we're talking about here, and that's that LGUs are gonna need time to look at this and determine, you know, how we want to regulate.
And from, just like the staff perspective, this isn't a pro or con against recreational cannabis. It's just a, give us, the time, it gives you the time to like decide where you want to go. So I envision if you adopted the moratorium on the seventeenth, later on in the summer into the fall, we'd come back to you in a workshop and really kind of hone in on some of these issues and get your feedback and direction on how you want to handle each of these kind of piece by piece.
Exactly. And one thing to point out, too, is this ordinance will have absolutely no impact on the edible cannabinoid products that became legal last year. no impact on the, um, edible cannabinoid products that became legal last year. Um, those are still going to be legal and you can still sell them. There was a few changes to that statute that I will, uh, or that I did summarize in the other, the shorter memo that is included in your work session packet tonight. Um, so I just want to make that clear, that we're really talking about the more, um, you know, comprehensive dispensaries like, um, that would be selling product. It, it's not the greatest comparison, but a lot of people call the, um, the low-level THC edibles or these gummies and these beverages that you could start selling last year. It's almost like three-two alcohol, very lower level in terms of, you know, content and the amount of substance in it, how much, you know, it, it alters your mind. Of course, if you drink enough of the three-two alcohol, you can get.
I was going to say.
Pretty drunk.
You want more, you want more gummies, I guess.
Correct. The same goes for the gummies, but, um, it's sort of similar to think about it that way. Um, and those products actually, uh, as of last week can now be sold in liquor stores. They can be sold at bars and restaurants with on-sale, um, liquor licenses. And so, those can be rolled out now on a much larger scale, um, than what we previously saw with, with some of that.
One of the issues and, uh, one of your colleagues, there, there was a webinar that Kenny and Kennedy and Graeben hosted on Friday that Erin and I participated in. And, uh, one of the challenges that we'll want to figure out with Dave and his colleagues' help is, at some point, there's going to be accusations of illegal sales, meaning like a cannaboid, cannabinoid retailer, someone's going to say, "Well, they're selling flower marijuana" or their percentages are off. And so, um, wanting to get some guidance and collaboration with the sheriff's office on how, you know, how we'll handle that or will that be the opposite of cannabis management by the state. It's, there are just a lot of tentacles to this. And so, having the time to make sure that everything's in place will be helpful to the team.
Yeah. And, you know, there's now going to be a ton more testing requirements for these products. I mean, one of the issues that came about with the law last year and how we kind of backed into that, it was a very strange statute. And I don't think half the legis, half the legislature knew what they were doing, frankly, because it was so confusing. Um, and many of them admitted, "We didn't even know we legalized this stuff." But, um, one of the cons of how that all unfolded was that the testing was not in place. The products were being sold and many of them were tested by third-party labs. You know, there were some news stories about that and they were clearly in violation of these low limits that were supposed to be in place, um, because they just were labeling things incorrectly. And that can also be really dangerous because people then will take the product thinking it's low-level and it's not. Um, so, a lot of that is on its way to being cleaned up. But, um, you know, just some, something to think about. Um, so, with the interim ordinance that we're talking about here first, um, that's authorized under the new statute, the only real requirement is that we hold a public hearing and that we provide ten days' published notice in the city's newspaper. Um, and again, to what Brent had pointed out before, we can't do any of this until after July first. And it could place a moratorium prohibiting these businesses all the way through to January first, um, 2025. Again, it doesn't impact the lower-level edibles. And that's significant for that, that longer time period. It's, you know, effectively a year and a half of, of moratorium potentially. Um, state law limits the time or the duration of a moratorium now under, to one year. Um, so this is different. It gives us a little more time, um, just given, I think, the subject matter and all the uncertainties. And that's why they did that. So, um, I guess we can pause there for now and maybe just talk about whether the council is, um, in favor of what staff's recommendation, I think, is, is to kind of press pause on these businesses and decide how we want to regulate them and zone them. Um, and if that's the case, we can work, um, toward that interim ordinance at the July meeting. Uh, our firm's going to have a, a template that we'll be able to use for, for Carver, of course. And it doesn't have to go through Planning Commission. It'll go right to the council. Um, there would be a public hearing. I don't know if, and, um, you know, whether there'd be much, um, support or lack thereof from folks. But, um, we do have to go through that, jump through that hoop before we adopt the, uh, the interim ordinance. So, your thoughts?
All right. Um, I want to be mindful of time because this has kind of flown by, but we do have five minutes. Um, but I want to give this, I can imagine this is a topic that we would want to discuss to death. Um, but, does anybody have any strong feelings on the moratorium that the council's suggesting?
I don't think this is a long conversation. I support doing a moratorium because there's a lot in here that they're licensing. I mean, the list of the types of businesses was lengthy and made me go, "Whoa, this is not just selling it, it's making it. It's having events. It's, wow, there's a lot in here." And so, I'd really like to see what the state is going to be defining around those licensing requirements and, you know, and also taking a look at our zoning, event planning. I mean, there just seems like a lot that we would probably need to look at.
Yeah, there's sixteen types of licenses. Most of them are not even ascertainable what those definitions mean.
Yep.
If you even look at.
Looking up meso business.
Yeah.
It's hard to find the definitions.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. So, there's a lot here. So, I mean.
All right. Thank you for making that quick.
Yeah.
Erin?
After everything from the last, uh, the cannaboid, can't pronounce it.
Cannabinoids.
Cannabinoids, uh, with distribution, production, and testing. I am absolutely for an interim ordinance.
Right. Christine?
Um, this, okay, so, this is just a comparison. When we look at, like, liquor and what they have for these, we have sixteen different types here. When it comes to liquor, what, are we even close to sixteen?
There's a lot, believe it or not. I mean.
Is there?
Yeah, there's probably, and Vic, you can attest. There's probably at least a dozen. I mean, there's on-sale wine, on-sale liquor, there's three-two, there's.
Oh, yeah.
There's malt liquor, there's, um, intoxicating off-sale, there's, you know, all, I mean, there's temporary licenses. There's a handful of liquor licenses.
Okay.
Um, not quite sixteen, but it's getting there.
It's getting there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so when they're talking about sometime next year in 2024, um, any, I mean, speculation, I realize you can't put a number on that, but, or date on that. But, I mean, 2024 could be the end of the year or it could be.
Yeah, it's totally one thousand percent dependent on how quickly the state gets its act together. And, um, not to say they won't do it quickly, but, um, they've got higher staff. They have to create rules and they have to, um, you know, create forms and processes. And there's, I mean, they've got to be totally ramped up before they press the go-button. And that office doesn't technically even become a thing until July first of this year. And so, um, we're just saying sometime in 2024, but, um, I've heard people say it could be by summer of 2024. And I've heard people say, "I doubt it's going to happen until 2025." So, honestly, I, I have no idea. I wish I had the crystal ball that, you know, many people claim to have, but, um, not sure.
Okay. Um, this one, I'm, I feel really undecided. I'm really kind of on the fence on this one. I, obviously, I was not for legislating, um, the, what do we call the other one, the T?
Cannabinoids. We can call it three-two.
There's too many things. I mean.
Three-two.
Three-two.
Yeah, there you go.
I was not in favor of letting the state legislature often, you know, regulate that. Um, this one is a little bit more extensive. Uh, it worries me a little bit, again, just saying, we're going to put this moratorium on for a year and a half, um, when things may change before that. They may get their, all the things in place. We, I mean, we allowed, or we chose not to go into a moratorium on that one without the state having all of their regulations completely set up at the time too. So.
And just so you know, I said this before, um, but just because you have it in place through January one, doesn't mean you can't repeal it early if you have your, get your rules in place. I mean, again, the point is buy ourselves as much time as we can, just in case we need that much time. But, if we come up with an ordinance in the next six months before the end of this year, that's going to regulate these products, our interim moratorium would be repealed. Not to say that will happen, given the timing of it all, but it, you know, my thought, and I think it's, it's good advice for any city that wants to do this, is take the time you're given by the legislature. But, if you decide later you don't need all that time, then you just repeal it.
And the OCM has to be up and operational and ready to go. And that's a guardrail, not a guardrail, but that's a hindrance to being able to sell as well, right?
Right. Yeah, under the new law.
So, it might not be us waiting until the first. They're saying that OCM might be, might, might not be ready to give out licenses until that time. So, just in interest of time.
Okay, just correct. Just one thing. Like, I would, I would say that you don't feel pressured to like, you don't, you're not deciding this. You're going to have a public hearing. You have time to think about it. We, I think we got enough feedback that we can at least place it on the agenda for your consideration in July.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Well, good. Yeah, but I, since.
I'm, I'm in favor of a moratorium, which will surprise absolutely no one in this room. Uh, but, the league also, I know. Um, the league also did a webinar last Friday. And I think we probably heard pretty similar things of, there's just so much we don't know. So, that is, I think, we just need time to get this figured out, to figure out what we want to do and who we want to be as far as regulating this.
Yeah. And the, I know we're up against the clock here, but, um, I did want to also talk about the edibles because there's this weird transition period with those. They'll eventually fall under the new laws umbrella, but until March of 25, they're still legal, um, without.
Do you mind if we hold that?
Licensing, we can talk about, as long as everyone's okay with that, we can talk about that. Because cities are just, and I, maybe this council will want to, maybe not, but cities are rethinking what they did or didn't do last year based on what we know is now in place. And I just want to take the council's temperature on that to see, are you okay with what you did last year? Do you want to, um, push pause on all this stuff because they're all now kind of under the same umbrella? Or, um, how you might want to treat those products because they, they can now be sold really anywhere, including, you know, bars, liquor stores, restaurants, um, gas stations. And once they start selling, you can't really unring that bell. And maybe that's okay and maybe it's not, um, with the council. So, yes, let's talk about that.
Okay. Okay. Sorry to cut you off.
That's okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thank you. We have a motion.
All second.
And a second. Kristen, a motion. Joy, a second. All those who have a say on.
Bye.
Thank you.